Good afternoon and welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 16th. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Goddard?
Here. Stand to the left.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other things for all.
All right, before we get started, Mr. Engineer, we're going to read, I'm going to read a proclamation because this Friday, in case anyone doesn't know, is National Adoption Day. So I have a proclamation here. I believe a couple people want to go up there and I'll read it and then hand you the proclamation and if you want to say something when I'm done. Thank you. This is whereas Montgomery County recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption, and whereas more than 120,000 children in the United States foster care system are waiting to be adopted, and whereas more than 2,900 children in Ohio are waiting for permanent families, and whereas to help find forever families for these children, the Montgomery County Probate Court will open their doors on November 19th this year to finalize the adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions, and whereas this effort along with similar celebrations in all 50 states will offer, offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of, of a child through foster care adoptions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio encourages all citizens to come together and recognize National Adoption Day and thus hereby designate November 19th, 2021, National Adoption Day in Montgomery County, signed by myself, Judy Dodge, Carolyn Rice, and David Lieberman. If you want to say a few words.
Just briefly, I'm Dave Brandon, Montgomery County Probate Court Judge, and a big, big thank you, a lot of gratitude to the Board and to the administrators and staff that assist them. I, I look forward to hearing you again on Friday. We're going to start around 9:20 at the Montgomery County Probate Court, and everybody's welcome to come, and we look forward to hearing this again, and thank you for your support and my future cooperation with the county and my court.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That goes back.
Good afternoon, I'm Craig Drickett, I'm the Associate Director of Department of Job and Family Services, Children's Services Division. I'd also like to extend a very heartfelt thank you to the Commissioners and to the county administration for this. Friday is truly a great day. We look forward to this day every year at Children's Services. We're fortunate in the partnership with the Probate Court that we're going, we will be finalizing six adoptions this coming Friday, so we have six children getting ready to officially join their forever families, and we thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yeah, I have witnessed that before, and it is really touching, and so just spectacular moment, not only in the lives of those children, but you know, the family that is taking them in, it is, you know, those are the things you dream of, those are the positive things that you hope for every child in that situation who's in search of a family forever.
Good. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. It's your turn.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to add, and I congratulate, best wishes for that day also. Resolution number 21-1416, authorize an agreement with Wolfert Inc. for practical aerial photography, mapping, and contour services for the 2022 Ortho Project in a cost not to exceed $212,468 through June 30th of 2023. And 1417 is to advertise for the Philadelphia Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project in Butler Township at an estimated cost of $2,800,000.
I'm in for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
County Prosecutor.
On behalf of the County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have resolution 21-1418, and that's to authorize an agreement with Cindy Westwood, Attorney at Law, that is Special Prosecuting Attorney providing legal counsel to the Humane Society of Greater Dayton in an amount not to exceed $1,000 through December 31st of 2021.
I'm in for approval. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Juvenile Court.
Thank you, Commissioners, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to add quickly, I was one of those lucky families 10 years ago on National Adoption Day that got to create my forever family. So we have two resolutions for your consideration today. 21-1419 authorizes agreement with South Community Incorporated to provide life program services to you to refer to the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board and the Ohio Department of Services in an amount not to exceed $925,500.16 through June 30th of 2022. And 21-1420, authorizes the purchase of storage area network equipment from Storm Seven Labs in an amount not to exceed $281,550.
I'm in for approval. Second. All those in favor? Aye. County Coroner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Coroner, we have resolution 1421, accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, for the FY '21 strengthening the Medical Examiner Coroner System Program in an amount of $163,227. We have resolution 1422, accept an extension of a grant from the Ohio Department of Health for the Violence and Injury Prevention Sections Rapid Fatal Overdose Surveillance Services in the amount of $49,998.
I'm in for approval. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, under the Court's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting on November 9th, 2021, resolution 1423, approval bills, and resolution 1424, approval trial on expenses. Both of those are, lists are available in the Court's Office.
I'm in for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, hi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, we have a variety of resolutions for your consideration today, the first of which is 1425, this is the approval of personnel actions, this list is available in the Court's Office. 1426, authorize a price agreement through a source well cooperative contract with Millennium Business Systems for multifunction devices and production printing equipment for the Materials Management Department through November 15th of 2028. 1427, appoints the County Commissioner Association of Ohio Service Corporation and Palmer Energy as the exclusive agent and consultant to secure electricity pricing. 1428 approves the plans, specifications, and estimated cost of $150,000 in solicit bids for construction of the bulb compactor electrical project. The following resolutions authorize agreements through December 31st of 2021, the first of which is 1429, with Gray Matter Systems LLC for professional services, hardware and software for the firewall deployment and configuration projects for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $49,953.40. 1430 is with YWCA's updating program for provider services in an amount not to exceed $30,000. And the last two resolutions approve purchases, the first is 1431 with Dell Technologies for VMware Workspace One Software licenses and professional services for the BCC IT Department in an amount not to exceed $113,540, and the last is 1432, Waste Central Business Equipment Company for the purchase and installation of a Patterson Pope rolling file system for the Facilities Management Department in an amount not to exceed $59,272.
I'm in for approval. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, we have four resolutions today. First is 1433, amend the agreement with Red Zone Robotics Inc. for the Large Diameter Sanitary Sewer Cleaning Assessment Project Phase III by adding $28,821.08 to the original amount for revised total of $344,154.30 and extend the term to March 31st, 2022. 1434, authorize a 100% release of the performance bond in subdivision's contract with Patrick and Melissa O'Bourn for the O'Bourn Sanitary Sewer Extinction Project. Resolution 1435, release 100% of the cash surety in subdivision's contract from Liberty Retirement Properties of Washington Township, LTV, for the Liberty Retirement Community Water Main Relocation Project. And the final resolution, 1436, release 100% of the letter of credit in subdivision's contract with Johnson's Carpet for the Johnson's Carpet Project.
I'm in for approval. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, we have a couple resolutions for your approval, 1437, to set up the grant from the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities for Safe fiscal year 2022 and 2023 to provide early intervention services for infants and toddlers with disabilities, ages 12 to 14 years, in an amount of $313,551. Resolution 1438, selects a request for proposals or RFP for furniture and delivery services for Children's Services Division, a couple of authorizing freemess, 1439, take counsel and consulting for consulting services in an amount not to exceed $10,000 through December 31st, 2021. 1440, pan a treasure chest to renew the annual partnership agreement for 2022 services in an amount not to exceed $100. We also have one late agenda item, resolution 1446, and this is to advertise and solicit requests for proposals for comprehensive case management employment programs or CCMEP services.
I'm in for approval. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Business Services, Chris.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, we have 21-1441, authorizing CARES small business business grant agreements with various local businesses through December 31st, 2021. 1442, authorizing CARES nonprofit grant agreements through, with various local organizations through December 31st, 2021. Those are just CARES, that's administrative kind of thing. Community Economic Development, we have 1443, authorizing an agreement with Boomshop Museum of Discovery to assist with construction costs for HVAC capital improvements in an amount not to exceed $350,000 through December 31st, 2021. That's essentially, they have two large HVAC units, both of which are very old, so it's deferred maintenance kind of stuff, they need assistance replacing one of these to keep the operation up and running. And 1444, amend the agreement with City of Kettering to provide rental assistance to households impacted by COVID-19, increasing the original amount by $1 million for a revised total of $1.5 million. This is part of our rental program where Kettering is assisting us with Morang Kettering Center in Washington Township for our rental system.
I'm in for approval. Second. Chris, I just have a couple questions about that.
Sure.
So just for clarification, Kettering is running with this, so this isn't going through any of the previous partners that we had?
Correct. We have various other partners, Homeful, Catholic Children's Services, Goodwill, and Salvation Army are our partners, so they are actually doing the case.
Okay, good. It seems like that word needs to get out, you know?
Yes, absolutely. You cannot contact Homeful and have them, you know, contact Kettering and get this done. Kettering's handling this part for us.
Good, okay. It's good to hear. And then other question? Well, it wasn't so much a question, it was just a comment and a thank you, you know, December 31st is the final date for any CARES dollars to be out the door, and so I just want to applaud you and everybody else, Jerry, Marvin, and the whole team, who has worked so hard on this to get those dollars to the community. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Marvin and your team, Larry Lash, numerous others, as you know, have done a great job getting that money out the door. Emily, you know, everybody, Prosecutor's Office, everybody did a great job.
Oh, John's office too.
Yeah, absolutely. There's numerous.
Don't want to leave anything out. It was everybody. It was. It was even Tyler.
Commissioners, I just wanted to elaborate, I just met with Kettering Municipal Judge in a judge's meeting, and they were very thankful that they are able to intercept a large amount of evictions due to the dollars that have been given to court, so, and then also Boomshop, Boomshop is doing a tremendous amount of renovations, they are a national site, I mean, people come to Boomshop from all around the world.
Oh, beautiful.
So our ability to partner with them to help them with the HVAC units, this is an economic development driver for the community because people come there, and all of the renovations they're doing, this is fantastic.
That's a great investment, it really is, yeah. And, and I really like the, you know, we learned a lot in the last two years with all this CARES dollars, but I like the way that Kettering, Kettering Courts are doing this, you know, you learn, and it just makes sense that that's where really it should have been administered everywhere, not just in Ohio, all throughout the country, because that made more sense, kind of, I like that model.
Absolutely. I think the combination of our providers, as Chris mentioned, and the courts, has really allowed us to push the numbers.
Thank you. Okay, I think there was another. I'm in for a motion. Second, and then all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under County Commissioners, 21-1445, appoint Michael Rediger to serve on the Montgomery County Convention Facilities Authority Board to fill an unexpired term through December 31st, 2022. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have several individuals who have signed up to speak. The first one is Rachel Habermill. Do you want to come up? State your name, address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Rachel Habermill, my address is 4441 Laker Road, Germantown. I'm here today to plead for help with the stray dogs that are being refused care at the Animal Resource Center. This has been a frequent occurrence for over a year, and is now happening so often that a face of pain was created by a concerned citizen to share in law cases of ARC neglect. I could easily cite the hundreds of instances where dogs were failed by ARC, but I know that I'm permitted on time, so I will concede share what I personally incurred on Sunday. Late in the evening, I received a call from Germantown Police who had been dispatched out for a stray dog. I just want to clarify, I have no affiliation with any animal rescue groups or humane society or anyone, I'm just a regular citizen, and this police officer called me and asked me for help with a stray dog because he had called ARC and they instructed him to just turn the dog back to the loose instead of bringing it in for help. The officer shared that this happens to him often, he was understandably disturbed with the instructions, and somehow came across my phone number and asked for help. Because I already own a special needs dog that can't be around other dogs, I agreed to keep the dog safe in our climate control barn. Once the officer brought me the dog, I saw that she was extremely skinny, had overgrown nails, was flat and terrified. After I tended to her for a few hours, I was contacted by an individual who claimed to own the dog. Keep in mind that I don't know this person, and the dog was, in my opinion, in poor shape and neglected. In spite of this, I had no authority to do anything but return the dog. This stranger came into my home in the middle of the night to claim their dog, who seemed terrified to return to them and recoiled out of fear. Out of my own concerns over complications, I had to return the dog. Citizens should not be put in this position, it is unsafe and a liability for the county. In each instance that I've reached out to ARC, they cite a lack of space. It's counterproductive to instruct people to release unaltered dogs while citing overpopulation. In spite of being unable to fathom how they can continuously be out of space, why wouldn't they have an emergency plan in place with neighboring shelters or animal rescue groups? Association of Shelter Veterinarians have published the Guidelines for Standards of Care. These guidelines clearly state that shelters must have policies to maintain adequate capacity for care and housing regardless, regardless of its circumstances such as budget and size. It also states that appropriate interventions must be made before numbers exceed the capacity for care. Waiting to respond until capacity has been exceeded results in animal suffering. According to the Ohio County Commissioner's Handbook, Section 127.02, the ultimate responsibility for properly administering Ohio dog laws is with the Board of County Commissioners. The Commissioner's Office claims to adhere to standards set by the National Animal Care and Control Association. NACA recommends that each animal holding facility evaluate and determine its passability and manage the population through adoption, transfer, foster, or euthanasia in order to maintain a humane and safe population within the predetermined capacity. NACA recommends that these facilities draft and maintain euthanasia policies and practices in order to control overcrowding problems in conjunction with progressive adoption, transfer, and foster programs. This is clearly not happening at ARC. Recently, the Commissioner's Office asked a citizen to house and care for strays that they find. Today, I ask you, the elected officials, whose duty it is to care for these animals, how many strays have you helped personally and cared for? How many times have you been awoken at night to care for these animals that are abandoned and need? In closing, I want to promise the Commissioners that this issue will no longer be swept under the rug. Citizens across this county are now working together to expose these injustices. We will frequently be at these meetings to present new occurrences of neglect. In your handout that I passed out, you'll see screenshots of the hundreds of faces that this has happened. Ultimately, the main reasons for paying the price for your derelict and duty are the innocent dogs. I beg you to remedy this problem before another plonderite, richie incident occurs.
We appreciate you coming in, I know this is difficult to talk about. Okay, next up we have James Wendley. Say your name, address, you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm James Wendley, I run a company, 4302 Luther Church Road, Germantown, Ohio. I run a company called All American Septieth. I got a letter Tuesday, November 2nd, that our county dump station, Dryden Road, Montgomery County Environmental Services, is closing down permanently. Then they said in that letter, where are we going to dispose, where are we going to dispose all the waste? Cincinnati, Urbana, Springfield, and then we have out of state, Richmond, them all, all them dump sites are currently quite a distance from Montgomery County, it would take approximately three hours to do a turn, taking our business from doing about five to seven jobs a day down to two, two jobs a day. What we have here in the county is we have a lot of weakened systems in the strain of the year, and we really need our dump station back, if we could, back to seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Our dump station was taken away from us because of a company south of us in another county came up here and disposed of 97 loads of their plant. So if you think of going into your plant that you've deep watered and everything, you have nothing but the solids they brought to our dump station in April of this year, disposing it in our dump station, locking our dump station down, they permanently closed for 11 days in the spring, when we needed them the most, leaving our customers calling us, and we had no answers for what to do for them. We also have, ever since that company has been banned from our dump station and a lot of other dump stations, because he didn't just do it to us, he did it to Springfield. And that brought our dump station down to a five day a week, eight hour day, which means you do two to three jobs a day, and we, and other companies like mine, have tried to catch up, and you just can't. There's no way, we have too many systems in Montgomery County to run till three o'clock. Well, our new alternatives are less than this, some are two o'clock, some are three o'clock, they're less than eight hour days, they're three hour trips, round trips, to do this, we're basically eliminating my company and several other companies, because I can't stay in business running two jobs a day, three jobs a day. We're going to leave our residents hanging because we don't have nothing for them to do with our system systems. We're in a very dire need right now because we have so many people waiting for them. We've really hurt the dump station during COVID, we, all of those companies overwhelmed them with how much waste we were taking, and we're just going to put everybody in their homes. Our systems weren't made for seven days a week, 24 hours a day, these people need to go to work, you go to schools, and so they use up their systems. This has been a burden on everybody in the county, and now that we're permanently closing December 31st, with no plan on where to go from here, we really are reaching out to you guys to maybe try to eliminate the December 31st close, 60 days is not sufficient for us to put a business plan even together to haul this waste across state lines or haul this waste on a three hour journey away from here. So I ask you to look into Montgomery County Environmental Services over there, I know we've got a new Director of Operations, but we have several people on our side at these facilities that believe that this need is needed, but the new Director of Operations knows CES, running a tight budget over there, and it's been a burden on me. I will do my part as my company to keep that facility open, I ask that you guys try to do the same for me. 2015, we put a new law in from the Ohio Health Department and the Ohio EPA that says these people must go in and maintain their system every three years. So if we're making a law that we have to be there every three years at your facility to take care of these systems, now we have no place to dispose of it, or we run the companies out of business, they're here locally, trying to maintain a business by taking down two to three jobs a day, it's just the numbers don't line up. Really need our seven day a week, 24 hour day dump station back online, while we work a plan to try to open up a new facility, or if somebody put in what they call a de-watering tumbler, and put processing, we shouldn't be processing the 70s anyway, we should be putting a de-watering tumbler in at one of these stations, de-watering it and only processing the water that comes out of it, and taking all the solids back to farm supply, landfills, whatever, it's just biomass, it's not waste. The 70 system is less than 2% of human waste, and a lot of people don't know that. That, that system should be brought back to the soil. Sir, if you could, yield the floor, we've got other, okay, thank you very much.
I just have one question, Mr. Wendley, do you know how many, in Montgomery County, how many 70 tanks there are?
I heard a number at one time, I don't know if it's factual, I heard a number around 130,000. So two a day, three a day.
I'm curious, I just, I just was curious.
I have several customers in here, so yeah.
Okay.
We just, okay, thank you, sir, for going.
No, it's okay.
We have one more.
Yes, one more on this. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mark.
Musa.
Okay. If you want to say your name and address, five minutes, thank you.
I'm Mark Musa, 88, 82 Rockford Road, Los Portobello. I've owned the company for 22 years, established in 53, 1953, and as Jim was saying, the plant is closing, we was, we was hoping that, talk to you guys and hopefully extend the closing or permanently keep it open. In the last five years, in emptying cost alone, I, my company has put out $257,000 in emptyings. So you guys are going to be losing that kind of money on eight to 10 companies, so I'm just, pretty much what Jim was saying, I back that up, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last is Wesley Hartshorn. Again, if you want to state your name, address, and five minutes, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Wesley Hartshorn, 1353 Creighton Avenue. I've been renovating abandoned properties for a little over 10 years, and at this point, I've contributed more to the treasurer's tax rolls than what was wiped out by the Board provisions during the City of Dayton's REIT program. And I say that to show that the system did work. The system allowed individuals to acquire abandoned property and renovate it, put it back on the tax rolls. And I understand that the Board of Provisions right now has halted delinquent tax foreclosure cases because of the ongoing Harrison V. Montgomery County. And it seems to me the central question in the case is about just compensation. And it seems to me the central question in the case is about just compensation for a delinquent landowner when delinquent taxes plus administrative costs are less than the property value. So it doesn't seem that the issue is really about the taking of the property, but rather just compensation. So if I'm correct, I mean, if there's more, you know, that I would need to know, I would love to hear it. So that's my basic understanding of Harrison B. Montgomery County and where that is right now. And so it is my hope that once the Board of Provisions is going again, that community development organizations be given direct access to the Board of Provisions. So right now in Dayton, there is very little resources available. I mean, simply put, the land bank is not a serve-all entity. The land bank can only do so much, and they do fine work, although it's really not, they're really not looking at Dayton. And so my hope is, is that once the Board of Provisions is reenacted and delinquent tax foreclosures are open again, that community development organizations have a direct pathway to the Board of Provisions and that community development organizations can invoke, can petition the treasurer to invoke his alternative redemption period. So simply, you know, the issues in Dayton, how the housing crisis have been said to be legacy issues, you know, we have an aging housing stock. And so I think that it is such a great time for new ideas, and I just hope that we don't let legacy thinking get in the way. So I just wanted to thank everybody for their work. I know some people in this room might be involved in Board of Provisions. So as that opens up, I encourage a direct pathway to the Board by way of community development organizations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Full disclosure, I do have a community development organization. And so I would like to compliment the demolition that we are probably going to see over the next five years. We're going to see a lot of it. And so I think and I know that there are properties with structures that can be renovated. So my hope is that I can complement those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments by county administrators?
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners. Before I start, I would like Matt Giliger to come up and address some of the challenges that we are having now around Dryden Road. It is more than just our wanting to make a change here. We've got some construction issues that are forcing us to make this change, gentlemen. And that's really what is causing this right in front of us. And also, we have to deal with some E B A changes. So Matt, could you address something?
Sure, sure. First of all, thank you for sitting down here, Jerry. You guys have an important business and we do recognize that. The Septic Station at Dryden Road is at the end of life. And then, as Michael mentioned, we have a project going on where we're, we're kind of, the sewer will not be going through Dryden Road, the building, the pretreatment, all that's moved into Western. So we're getting ready to start a construction project right there where we're going to be pumping over to our Western plant. And doing so, the lab will also vacate that, that building and it will be unmanned, which will make it difficult to enforce what goes into a Septic Station. So those are the main reasons. And of course, we want to protect Western Regional. It was built many years ago, it's aging, and we've had, we had some issues, as you pointed out, trying to keep the health of, of the processes so we can treat that wastewater going. So it's more about the project and some of the other things going on is what's behind that. We recognize the importance of your businesses.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I, can I ask you, have you looked at a de-watering tumbler so you're not processing septic, you're only processing the water at rep one, something other than, so we're only?
I'd have to defer that to, to people that aren't here.
Okay.
But I could, I could, you know, go back and get some, get the answer to that question and get your contact information afterwards.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, Commissioners. Well, I wanted to say what an honor it was last week to be at the Omega Hope Center for Families Riving Cutting. And it was just amazing to be at something that is really going to be another catalyst project for the North West Dayton Corridor. And we're now seeing this resurgence that is moving forward, Jim City Market, what we're doing in West Town with the New Employment Opportunities Center. You know, that whole shopping center area has come to life. All of these things are coming together and they've been very strategic, and I thank you for your support, Commissioner. I think the Hope Center is going to be a shining resource around us. Also, the Hope Center is designed to help families break generational cycle of poverty. And this project, along with the Omega C D C, has had tremendous community support. You've got Dayton Children's, you've got Mini University, you've got Sinclair College. What a phenomenal collaboration. Our county workforce department is going to do a ready-for-work job site there. We'll have human services planning and development also there with the Pathway Stable Employment Program. So I spoke about this at the ribbon cutting last week along with Commissioners Dodd and Bryce, and it was a great day. And I want to thank you again, Commissioners. We are a major partner in this project. And so without your support and your guidance, not just for the Hope Center, but for all of these projects, I think it's making a difference in our community at large. So thank you, thank all three of you, we really appreciate it.
I would totally agree. It was an amazing day and the weather cooperated and everything. And at the time, I mentioned it was, what really struck me is that, you know, I was one of the founders of the Montgomery County Land Bank years ago, and I still sit on the board, as does Judy. And that was one of our first projects was on that site. We rented the City of Dayton $100,000 for demolition of some of those buildings that used to be the United Theological Seminary, and they were, you know, past their life for today's world. So to see some of, knowing how it was and then to see how it's progressed with all of the investment in that area and the impact it will have on the community and neighborhood was quite rewarding. I have a couple other things to also mention is, you'll see, we have Orange Ribbons and Orange on today, and this is at, and I see other people have Orange Ribbons. This is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And so there's lots of activities going on and we just want to raise the bar on that of all the work we do year-round, just incredible. So you can go to the homeless solutions website part of Montgomery County and get, there's something happening every day if you're interested, so I encourage you to do that. I also wanted to mention that last Friday, I also had the great opportunity to be out at the V A for the Miami Valley Housing Opportunities ribbon cutting of the General Franklin Building that has long housed veterans. And this was a remodel that will be now the home 38 years, they're absolutely gorgeous for homeless veterans and others who now have a place that is right there on campus, readily available to other V A services. It was a very complicated project, and I want to give public kudos because I got the kudos and they really got to our team, Jessica Jenkins and Tamara Jones, for their role in when the project hit a bump in the road, they were able to do the wonderful work they do every day to help make that project happen. So Jerry, be sure that they know that I accepted the thanks on behalf of the whole team. And I know Jessica, the whole team does it, but please let them know, I want to publicly thank them for the amazing work they do every day. So it's been a great week.
And tomorrow, the three of us are going to be at the Environmental Learning Center, and it's going to be the contest reception tomorrow for the winners of the different art things, artwork that has been into the, two themes that we come up with every year, one for recycling and one for water conservation. There might be a few surprises there, but several winners have been able to win the chance to earn money for their schools, so that's going to be exciting. And I have to give an extra special shout-out to our Environmental Learning Center staff. You know, this pandemic has posed new challenges to their mission of educating our next generations about the earth and ways to protect it. However, they have risen to the challenge and continue to offer this calendar contest and other educational tools. So thank you, guys, at the Learning Center.
I was agreeing with you.
It always is, yeah.
However, you said that you meant at the Learning Center?
No.
And I thought Matt kind of looked like, where are we going to put everybody?
The paragraph.
You're agreeing.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I see.
Well, I want to say a few other words.
You go, right?
No, no, no. You're sure?
Yep.
Positive, I'm done. Because you can always wrap it up.
I know.
This is why we get along. So it was very clear that I wasn't at the Hope Learning, at the Hope Center, you were there in spirit. I actually, I was there watching on social media and I had a bird eye view, and I just wanted to say that they had a drone and it was pretty cool to watch you guys and they zoomed in on you. Oh, really? I watched the whole thing, heard all your speeches, you did great. Mike, thank you for saying my name. I was, as Michael likes to always say, I was representing the fam in another place. So I couldn't be there, but that is one of those, the Hope Center is something that seems like we've been talking about for years, right, Carolyn?
Yeah.
And I want to give a shout-out to former Commissioner Dan Foley, who truly, this was like one of his things, it was like, okay, Dan, okay, we know, we all agree, it'll be great. We don't know where we're going to get the money, but it's wonderful. And so Dan, along with Dan Kern, former U D president, really led the charge initially on raising funds, you know, outside of government dollars. And they did, they did a great job with that. And we were happy that we were able to invest as well, and it's great to hear that we're going to be a part of that whole, that whole, that center. And the model that they're really, they keep talking about, it's called the two-generational approach to eliminating poverty. And Jerry knows all about it, she's nodding her head. But it's, you know, so there'll be a preschool there, there'll be our services there to help people not only find jobs, but connect and connect to what education they need. And so Sinclair's there. And so it's going to be one of those like kind of all-encompassing type of places. So we're really excited about it. I was also very happy to represent fam somewhere else, but it was a great week and I'm just really pleased with the way things are happening, you know, between us opening up our, our center at West Town. We've got a lot of great things happening. So we had our first taste of winter. You guys didn't have to do too much. No. No. But.
Thank you for the papers for two more.
Although in my neighborhood, people were building snowmen and there's still a lot, so. But this is probably the perfect time, I'll first say, probably not about for today and tomorrow. It's finally warmed up, probably our last warm-up, right? But this is a perfect time to remind everyone that we have a county code red system. Everybody know that? Most people are nodding yes, but I see some like, what is that? So the county code red system is, anyone that registers can receive alerts via email, voicemail, and text. So I know a lot of jurisdictions started this earlier, and I know out in Clayton, I get, you know, calls from Clayton, but down in the county, we have our code red, and this system will allow you to not only know about threatening weather, but it will also let you know about hazardous material situations and other incidents of concern. And our emergency management professionals can alert either the whole county, or they can do it street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood, city by city. So you need to register for that. And so if you haven't signed up to do so, there is an app for that, and you can put it on your phone, and this will provide information specific to your location of your phone, regardless of where you live. So if you're downtown and something happens, you'll get that alert. So, and it's also very helpful to know if you're downtown, on vacation, I would want to know if there was something happening and my dog sitter needed to take care of my dog, get him out. So, you know, it's, it's really a good tool, interesting tool. And you can sign up for that at our emergency management page on our website at MCO, McOhio.org.
Good, okay. There's no meeting next Tuesday, the 23rd. Our next one will be here Tuesday, November 30th. I can't believe that day will start in September. Anyway, everybody have a safe, healthy, and happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I have one thing, is it Tuesday? I don't think it's too late if anybody's watching further, please someone? Can you still sign up for that?
I think we've closed them.
Oh, never mind, but there is, I just think that's a huge thing that Judy has really, you know, been the champion for, this is the 11th year?
Yep.
The 11th year, we, I just don't think we can go, let this week go by and not say that. We all know that hunger is such an issue and access to adequate food and food insecurity. We've certainly made strides in many different directions, but this is the summit and it's happening virtually this year, and isn't it roots to fruits?
Roots to fruit.
All right, yeah, remember just enough to be dangerous.
How many? Over 300 people.
That's wonderful, that's great. So just to you and Erica and your whole team and everyone involved, I know that it's a lot of people. I plan to be there and I just think, yeah, if you, if you didn't get it to sign up this year, make sure you sign up next year and see what's happening in this community. So I don't think we should let that, we go by with that.
Thank you, thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second, all those are favors.